Foreign language was Japanese. So that's why I didn't know any English. When I came to America, when I turned on TV, I still remember the only word I can understood is goodbye. And when somebody called me by the phone, I always was so scared to pick the phone up. And I even asked my friend to come to my daughter's school for the student parents' conference because I couldn't understand what teachers say. Here in America, everybody speaks English. You have to understand the English. So that's why I'm involved in this program. My relationship with my tutor, Gwen, like teacher with student. But for me, I think our relationship more like friends.
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay.
What's different between I got and I've got?
You know, she knows a lot about language because she studied language and its component parts, kind of the structure of language. We really have to be creative to keep her interested in what we're learning. Sometimes we take field trips, actually. We will go to the market. She typically shops in an Asian market. So I took her to a local grocery store and we ordered turkey, you know? Just going through that process can be very intimidating for someone who's not done it before or doesn't know what to order and isn't sure. So we also work through all the Challenger books, which are very helpful as far as providing structure. You know, she does a lot of writing for the Chinese newspaper. She submits articles on a fairly regular basis. So I have her translate them and then we work on grammar that way. Rather than just writing random sentences, we try to work on something that's real so that it has more meaning to her.
When she saw me wrote some articles in English, she always said, "Momma, you will become famous little by little." I think that's helped my daughter set her goal. I think my goal for now, when my English getting better and better, I'll apply like Chinese language teacher here after I can speak English fluently.
I'm 31 years old. I was born in Dallas, Texas. My mother moved down here to Los Angeles when I was two years old and raises in East Los Angeles. I went to school here, finished high school, my junior and senior year. And then I went off to school, college at Azusa Pacific University. And at Azusa, I completed four years, received my bachelor's degree in social work. I'm living in Los Angeles in the area of Watts. My five-year-old son Emanuel. Emanuel's in school now. He's in preschool. He's getting ready for kindergarten. I decided to come to the adult literacy program to learn basic writing skills. I was wanting to pass exam, the C-Best, to be a teacher. I took the test and did not pass it. And so I came to adult literacy program and met with Shelley.
I really like what you're doing with your essays, the way that they...
Shelley is real nice. She's more like a mentor type. She's building a lot of confidence in which I didn't have confidence in my writing before.
When Mary came in, it was apparent to me that there was a good chance she was going to be beyond the level of the student that we traditionally work with. Mary came to me distressed. She was distressed because she had taken the C-Best test twice and had not succeeded in passing the essay portion. And she confessed to me that she was very anxious about this portion of the test because essay writing had never been her strong suit, even in high school. In her case, because she wanted to or needed to work on essay writing, I asked her to give me a writing sample because I thought that might let me know more precisely if she was really dramatically beyond our program. I found that there were fundamental things, for example, areas of grammar and punctuation, spelling, that needed to be worked on in order for her to move forward. And those are components of our program. So the first thing I did was to try to put Mary at ease. And I told her, "Look, you don't have to be nervous with me and I will be gentle with you." So we got beyond that. The most dramatic change I saw in Mary was her attitude, which she shared with me after she took the exam. She came in to share the good news that she had passed her exam, the essay portion. And when I asked her, she said, "Well, a friend had asked me how the exam went." And she said, "I walked out of there and I knew I had passed," she said, "because I'm a teacher." And I thought, "Look at all that confidence." And that was a huge change. And it was really great to see. Mary has a son. His name is Emanuel. He's five years old, I believe. And this made Mary eligible for a program we have called Families for Literacy. Through this program, the student can earn up to six free children's books for their child. And all the student has to learn to do is to read the book like a story, the way it should be read to a child.
Listen to their father preach, George, on January 15th, 19...
I thought Mary could benefit also from this process of learning how to read a children's book to her son and practice being a teacher with her own son.
Being in this program has allowed me and Emanuel to continue to learn. I know that at first, when I would read to Emanuel, I was not being very expressive in my reading.
The wheels on the bus go round and round, round and round.
But now it's given him a desire to want to hear more and me to read more to him. I was actually the first student to actually go off to college in my family. So I would hope for Emanuel to continue to keep the desire to learn and go off to college also. After completing my credential, I would like to come back into the literacy program to be a tutor so that I would tutor other students to build their learning skills and their confidence also.
As you can see from these stories, the impact the Adult Literacy Services provide extends beyond the learners themselves. The learner's success is felt by their family, friends, coworkers, employers, and their community. A key element to the success is the close working bond that's formed by each student with their tutor. These relationships are as rewarding to the tutors as they are to the learners. The tutors of the Adult Literacy Centers are dedicated and motivated by their commitment to make a difference in the lives of their students. They too have a meaningful story to tell.
I live in North Pomona and I take express buses here and the train to get here. Takes about two hours to get here. Well, I see this as an opportunity to do something that I love, to help people to attain their goals in their lives, whether it's reading to their children or filling out an application or going back to school, going to finish their GED or even going on to college. And I think this is really important for them.
50 years old, born and raised in Los Angeles. Attended Locke High School. I'm currently a facilitator with Unite LA. I was approached by the coordinator and the pitch was, "Do you have time to help another person in their reading and literacy challenges?" And it hit me as a no-brainer, yes. I just had to make sure I could carve out the time. But it was flexible enough where I thought I could do it.
This word.
Hop.
Exactly. The girl is hopping. It's a hop. Short vowel sound is?
Ah.
Ah, very good.
What we're reminded of in our training is that our responsibility is not so much to get them from Lesson A to Lesson Z, but to give them the confidence of being accountable for their own learning and at their own pace with respect to the challenges that they have at home or their job or the challenges they bring to the tutoring session. We are there to guide them through the learning process. And if it means we have to stop and talk about how to shop for a suit or how to set up a budget for home, that's part of the learning process.
I went to school in Pomona and Laverne. I went to college at UC Berkeley. I have an engineering degree from Berkeley. And I achieved an MBA at Pepperdine University. I became diagnosed with lupus in 2000. I became very ill and had to undergo six months of chemotherapy. And it was during my time recuperating from the chemo and trying to figure out, well, what am I going to do with my life, that I decided, I became reconnected with the library. I was reading a lot, using the resources, became aware of the Adult Literacy Program and really needed to do something of value. Tutoring is a wonderful experience, yes, you know, all the lofty goals of contributing to society, et cetera. It's also a challenge for the tutor. They really have to, it forces you to get outside of your comfort zone. You go to maybe a place of the city that you would not see. You meet people that you probably wouldn't ever meet in your daily life. For me, it has expanded my worldview.
Should.
Should.
Shu.
Should.
Literacy is something a lot of us take for granted. And it's not just the act of being able to read and it's not the act of being able to write. It affects your whole life as far as your confidence and how you interact with people and are you able to function in society and, you know, with the legal aspects. So I think being able to help someone learn to read affects their whole life. There are some families, immigrant families, that come to America. The children are all fluent in English and the parents can't communicate with their children. So, I mean, on a very personal level, it's a gift.
I am 48 years old. I grew up in a small town in San Miguel, New Mexico. I'm originally from Mexico. I was born in Torreon, Mexico. I finished high school in San Miguel, New Mexico. I came to California at the age of 17 and I started working for the Los Angeles Public Library in the year of 1976. My current occupation is a clerk typist. And what encouraged me to become a tutor was that I would see that most of my nephews had a problem learning to read, but I felt I couldn't help them because I was one of their family members and they wouldn't pay attention to me. One of the greatest gifts that you could give a person, that you could show them how to read, that you made a difference in their lives. My goals for my students is to teach them how to spell and to teach them how to read. That way, he's interested in becoming a parole officer and into the criminal justice system. And with me teaching him, I feel he could get ahead with all his classes. I'll be so proud when that day, one day, he comes and say, "Hey, listen, I passed my test. I'm a parole officer," you know? That'll be one of my greatest happiness.
You have met some of the many people benefiting from this wonderful program. They represent the fruit and the branches of this tree of learning we call the Adult Literacy Services. The source of the nourishment this tree provides lies in the programs, the program coordinators, and the generosity of donors, patrons, and foundations.
We have students who have to drive across town to pay all their bills in cash because they can't write a check. We have students who need medication and cannot read the label once they get the medication. We have people who go to the store and shop for things that they need for their health and cannot read the labels, don't know if someone has, something has extra sugar in it or is not for diabetics. I think I'm very lucky and I'm very blessed to be working with people that I work with because they care. They care about people. They care about helping people. You can't help but get involved when someone comes in to tell you their story.
While the S-Mark Taper Adult Literacy Center is in the Koreatown library, this community itself is quite diverse and that's reflected in the students and tutors that come through the doors of the Literacy Center. Among my students who have come to the Adult Literacy Program, there have been white Americans, African-Americans, Latinos, Koreans, other Asian ethnicities. And so there is no one specific type. The program is open to individuals who speak and understand English, but for whatever reason are not reading or writing at a sixth-grade level. And so we help them improve their reading and writing. So there's a great diversity of students. As far as tutors go, it's the same thing. So as a tutor, if you have any time to give where you want to contribute to the community, this would be the way to do it. You will find it to be very rewarding to be able to help an adult who may be 45 years old to be able to write a letter to somebody he's never written to before. And to be able to help him do that would be very satisfying. Just that in itself would give you the satisfaction of knowing that you're contributing.
I encounter a wide range in levels of students. I have had students come into the program who don't have a learning disability, but maybe have a specific goal they want to meet. Then they're going to generally be at a much higher level than the ones who come in with the learning disability. We just can't imagine, as people who already read, the worlds that are open for our students as they develop their skills and learn new things. In terms of tutors, any tutor, all tutors always say, "I get more out of this program than I can give" because the rewards for them of giving are so great. When you see someone, an adult especially, be able to do something that they haven't been able to do before and you see the change within them and you know that you are part of that change, it's a tremendous gift.
Many of the people taking advantage of our programs here at the Venice Branch Library and the Los Angeles Public Library System are people that have what I call zip lit or zero literacy ability to people at the highest level of education. The demographics of students at this branch covers a wide swath. We have people from Nepal, people from China, people from Japan, people from Africa, people from the West Indies. We have lots of people from Los Angeles, from the United States, different parts. They migrate here to California. They find that they have a lack in reading ability. We can teach people how to read, teach people how to write, teach people how to spell. We can get them up to the eighth-grade level if they stay in our program and follow the tutor's advice. Now, we're not able to teach a person how to become a teacher in eight hours. What we do is acquaint them with the materials we have available and show them how to use them. That spark that they have inside them that makes them want to help to make the community better allows them to become a tutor.
The Los Angeles Public Library is proud to have the Library Foundation of Los Angeles as a partner in its efforts to address illiteracy.
The Library Foundation has had a number of wonderful donors that we've been very, very grateful for. We have a board of directors, volunteers that go into the community and raise the funding that is needed to benefit the library and to put on the kinds of programs like Adult Literacy that are so needed in the community.
The American poet and diplomat James Russell Lowell once said, "It's not what we give but what we share, for the gift without the giver is bare." The Los Angeles Public Library is not only providing the means by which people are developing their skills for reading and writing, they are sharing the gift of literacy. These gifts are delivered through one-on-one tutorial experiences all over the LA basin. Individuals and families are experiencing the joys of greater literacy. These learning experiences are enriching tutors and all who participate in this wonderful program. Wouldn't you like to share the gift of literacy with someone?
Okay, good morning, good morning. Shh. Good morning. Today is Tuesday, November 22nd. I want to welcome you to the Los Angeles City Council. We are sorry we were a tad late today. We attended the funeral of one of our colleague's father. So I'm sorry for your inconvenience, but we are family here and we wanted to pay our respect. So, again, it is Tuesday, November 22nd. Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. Would you please call a roll?
Bloomfield, Bonin, Buscaino, Sadio, Englander, Harris-Dawson, Weezer, Corretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, Wesson. Ten members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you very much. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Englander moves. Mr. Price seconds. Next?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Sadio moves and Mr. Weezer seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, today is Tuesday and time for the flag salute.
I'm going to ask that we all rise will be led today by Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Place your hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Let's run through the agenda.
Mr. President, there's a request to continue items 20 to November 30th.
Okay, so without objection, that will be the order?
And, Mr. President, the Department of Building and Safety requests that item 1C and 1E be continued to December 7th and that item 1H be received and filed as the lien was rescinded.
Okay, without objection as well. Continue.
Items 1 through 6 are items noticed for public hearing.
Do we have cards?
Yes, there are cards on 2 and 3.
Let's hold those items. Members, let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes. Items 7 through 41 are items for which public hearings have been held. There is a request to hold item 32 on the desk for an amending motion.
Okay, let's hold that item. And, Mr. O'Farrell?
Item 41 special, please.
We'll hold 41 for Mr. O'Farrell. Mr. Rue? Seventeen. Mr. Englander?
Let's see if we can call forth with items 63 and 67, eh, Mr. President?
Without objection, that'll be the order.
And, Mr. President, the orders for items 8 through 14 will be held over one week to November 29th unless reconsidered with 12 members present.
Thank you. Continue.
Items 42 through 67 are items for which public hearings have not been held. For item 56, the Bureau of Engineering has submitted a revised report for council consideration. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, these items are now before this body. Do you have cards?
Yes, I have cards on 48, 51, 52, 53, 56, 57, 58, 60, and 61.
Thank you. Any specials, members?
And, Mr. President, the orders for items 8 through 14 will be held over one week to November 29th unless reconsidered with 12 members present.
Okay, let's hold that item. And, Mr. O'Farrell?
Item 41 special, please.
We'll hold 41 for Mr. O'Farrell. Mr. Rue? Seventeen. Mr. Englander? Sixteen. Any other specials? Okay, let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
And, Mr. President, the orders for items 8 through 14 will be held over one week to November 29th unless reconsidered with 12 members present.
Thank you. Continue.
Items 42 through 67 are items for which public hearings have not been held. For item 56, the Bureau of Engineering has submitted a revised report for council consideration. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, these items are now before this body. Do you have cards?
Yes, I have cards on 48, 51, 52, 53, 56, 57, 58, 60, and 61.
Thank you. Any specials, members? Okay, let's hold those items and prepare to vote on what's left. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote. And, Mr. President?
Let's see if we can call forth with items 63 and 67, eh, Mr. President?
Without objection, that'll be the order.
And, Mr. President, the orders for items 8 through 14 will be held over one week to November 29th unless reconsidered with 12 members present.
Thank you. Continue.
Items 42 through 67 are items for which public hearings have not been held. For item 56, the Bureau of Engineering has submitted a revised report for council consideration. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, these items are now before this body. Do you have cards?
Yes, I have cards on 48, 51, 52, 53, 56, 57, 58, 60, and 61.
Thank you. Any specials, members? Okay, let's hold those items and prepare to vote on what's left. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote. And, Mr. Buscaino?
Let's see if we can call forth with items 63 and 67, eh, Mr. President?
Without objection, that'll be the order.
And, Mr. President, the orders for items 8 through 14 will be held over one week to November 29th unless reconsidered with 12 members present.
Thank you. Continue.
Items 42 through 67 are items for which public hearings have not been held. For item 56, the Bureau of Engineering has submitted a revised report for council consideration. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, these items are now before this body. Do you have cards?
Yes, I have cards on 48, 51, 52, 53, 56, 57, 58, 60, and 61.
Thank you. Any specials, members? Okay, let's hold those items and prepare to vote on what's left. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote. And, Mr. President?
Let's see if we can call forth with items 63 and 67, eh, Mr. President?
Without objection, that'll be the order.
And, Mr. President, the orders for those items will be held over a week to November 29th unless reconsidered with 12 members.
Okay, I'm optimistic we'll have another member arriving in the next few minutes or so. Please remind me at that time to reconsider those items. Mr. Bonin?
Can we also send item 65 forthwith, please?
65 forthwith, per Mr. Bonin. Continue.
On the supplemental agenda, items 68 and 69 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards on these items?
Yes, cards on both 68 and 69.
Okay. So that brings us where?
Mr. President, that takes council back to items called special or general public comment.
Okay, guys, I'm going to call for order so that we can take care of business. Hey, 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 we respect your point of view, but we have business that we're going to take care of today. Would you please?
Okay, now, do you guys want to be in here when the item actually comes up? Then you're going to have to follow the rules of decorum.
So, now, let us move forward. No, wait, no, 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 no. We have a lot of work to do. We don't want to go back and forth. Just relax. It will come up. Okay, let's keep it down. Eric Previn, public comment. Items 3, 5, 3, 51, 52, 53, 58, 60, 68, 69. Mr. Previn? Mr. Previn, do you want to speak or not? Then come forward. Give him his three minutes for... He's got items, again, 3, 51, 52, 53, 58, 60, 68, 69. Mr. Previn, do you want to speak or not? Then come forward. Give him his three minutes for... He's got items, again, 3, 51, 52, 53, 58, 60, 68, 69.
May I do my one minute of public comment first?
No, that's last.
Okay, so, okay, sir, this is so many items today that I'm going to have to go slowly, and I'm very upset that these folks are not going to be heard early.
No, would you, Mr. Previn, would you pick an item and speak to the item?
Okay, thank you, sir. David Rue is the council member from the 4th district, and we very much appreciate his service. And there is a piece of property that is owned by AT&amp;T, and he would like to put out some appraisal requests to the GSD to get feedback on what it might cost. It needs to, whatever we pay, needs to be minus $750,000 that Krikorian approved when AT&amp;T came after the county, I mean, the city, rather, for $934,000 for absolute bullpucky. We don't want to do that for the folks who are lobbying through Englander, Knobby, and Allen. We don't want to do it for anyone. We want fair deals for people of the city of Los Angeles, not for the backroom dealers. Thank you, sir. Item number 14 is Edgar Clodion from Mayor Brown is bringing forward this odious project. Sorry, sir. Yeah, item number 16.
Mr. Previn, I gave you, Mr. Previn, hold his time. Mr. Previn, I gave you the items that you signed up to speak for. I told you and I'll tell you again, items 3, 51, 52, 53, 58, 60, 68, 69. 68 is the Municipal Facilities Committee is having a little sale of some CRLA property. I think this one's at 110 South Boyle. I believe it's in Weezer's district.
And they're involving the Conflict of Interest Panel lawyer. This is a bunch of lawyers who work for the county sometimes and other stuff, but for some... Mike Fuer believes that they're not going to be in conflict. I don't see that, quite frankly. And item number 69 is the same group. It's the Municipal Facilities Committee, which is trying to get a sale going on 3685 South Vermont. This is in Mr. Harris-Dawson's district, if I've got that correct. But here, there's no conflict panel needed, sir. I assume you'll be overseeing that one for everybody. Thank you for that. As I said, I really wanted to talk about item number 19 because you know I was instrumental in bringing forward the Wells Fargo.
Mr. Previn, items 3, 51, 52, 53, 58, 60, 68, 69.
Okay. 52 is a $725 million in general obligation refunding bonds. Now, the LA Times, Peter Jamison, wrote about how what we have going on here in our pension program at the city of Los Angeles is resulting in 20% of all of the revenue that comes into the city going out the door for pensions. Now, we have to honor those here in California, and everyone wants to do that. But it's these kinds of deals for shaving the bonds this way and that and pushing out the obligation further so that the residents who come behind you, sir, once you're already out in your retirement and having a great time playing shuffleboard with Westall and chain smoking or whatever it is you guys do, when you're ignoring the public in CD7. And Mr. Felipe Fuentes, who left the city council to go work for Apex, a lobbyist in Sacramento, left the people of Pacoima and Mission Hills and Silmar without representation at this very body, and that frankly smells to high heaven. And you ought to look at citywatchla.com today, and you can see an article that I wrote with my brother Joshua about how the bullet train, which is heading in the direction of these folks who were given a false sense of reprieve, it's really beyond the pale.
All right, your time has expired. Give him his minute for general public comment.
Okay, my general public comment has to be about, first of all, I want to take five seconds to say I'm so sorry about the council member's father. That is a terrible tragedy, and I know it's been ongoing. But as for these folks who have come down to talk about the reef and Mr. Price's district, it is astonishing that this body could not bring themselves to allow, to push these people away from their...
Do we have cards?
Yes, there are cards on two and three.
Let's, let's hold those items. Members, let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Continue, please.
Items seven through forty-one are items for which public hearings have been held. There is a request to hold item thirty-two on the desk for an amending motion.
Okay, let's hold, let's hold that item. And Mr. O'Farrell?
Item forty-one special, please.
We'll hold forty-one for Mr. O'Farrell. Mr. Rue?
Seventeen.
Seventeen. Mr. Englander?
Sixteen, please.
Sixteen. Any other specials? Okay, let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, continue.
And, Mr. President, the awards for items eight through fourteen will be held over one week to November twenty-ninth unless reconsidered with twelve members present.
Thank you. Continue.
Items forty-two through sixty-seven are items for which public hearings have not been held. For item fifty-six, the Bureau of Engineering has submitted a revised report for council consideration. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, these items are now before this body. Do you have cards?
Yes, I have cards on forty-eight, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, sixty, and sixty-one.
Thank you. Any specials, members? Okay, let's hold those items and prepare to vote on what's left. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
And... Uh, Mr. Buscayna?
Let's see, if we can call forth with items sixty-three and sixty-seven, eh, Mr. President?
Without objection, that'll be the order.
And, Mr. President, the awards for those items will be held over a week to November twenty-ninth unless reconsidered with twelve members.
Okay, I'm optimistic we'll have another member arriving in the next few minutes or so. Please remind me at that time to reconsider those items. Mr. Bonin?
Can we also send item sixty-five forthwith, please?
Sixty-five forthwith per Mr. Bonin. Continue.
On the supplemental agenda, items sixty-eight and sixty-nine are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards on these items?
Yes, cards on both sixty-eight and sixty-nine.
So that brings us where?
Mr. President, that takes council back to items called special or general public comment.
Okay, yeah, okay, okay, guys, I'm gonna call for order so that we can take our, take care of business. Hey, 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 we respect, we respect your point of view, but we have business that we're gonna take care of today. Would you please, uh... Okay, now, do you guys wanna be in here when the item actually comes up? Then you're gonna have to, to follow the rules of decorum. So, now, let us move forward. Oh, no, wait, no, 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 we have a lot of work to do. We don't wanna go back and forth. Just relax, you, you're, it will come up. Okay, let's, let's keep it down. Eric Previn, public comment. Items three, fi, three, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-eight, sixty, sixty-eight, sixty-nine. Mr. Previn? Mr. Previn? Mr. Previn, do you wanna speak or not? Then come forward, give him his three minutes for, he's got items, again, three, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-eight, sixty, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, and then he'll get his one minute of public comment. Mr. Previn?
May I do my one minute of public comment first?
No, that's last.
Okay, so, so, okay, sir, this is so many items today that I'm gonna have to go slowly, and I'm very upset that these folks are not gonna be heard early.
No, would you, Mr. Previn?
Yeah.
Would you pick an item and speak to the item?
Okay, thank you, sir. David Rue is the council member from the fourth district, and we very much appreciate his service. And there is a piece of property that is owned by AT&amp;T, and he would like to put out some appraisal requests to the GSD to get feedback on what it might cost. It needs to, whatever we pay, needs to be minus seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars that Krikorian approved when AT&amp;T came after the county, I mean, the city, rather, for nine-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand dollars for absolute bullpucky. We don't wanna do that for the folks who are lobbying through Englander, Knobi and Allen. We don't wanna do it for anyone. We want fair deals for people of the City of Los Angeles, not for the back-room dealers. Thank you, sir. Item number fourteen is Edgar Claudio from Mayor Brown is bringing forward this odious project.
No, items, Mr. Previn...
No, sorry, sir. Yeah, item number sixteen...
Mr. Previn, I gave you, Mr. Previn... Hold his time. Mr. Previn, I gave you the items that you signed up to speak for. I told you and I'll tell you again, items three, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-eight, sixty, sixty-eight, and sixty-nine.
Okay, sixty-eight is the Municipal Facilities Committee is having a little sale of some CRLA property. I think this one's at one-ten South Boyle, I believe it's in Weezer's district. And they're involving the conflict, Conflict of Interest Panel lawyer. This is a bunch of lawyers who work for the county sometimes and other stuff, but for some, some, Mike Fuer believes that they're not gonna be in conflict. I don't see that, quite frankly. And item number sixty-nine is the same group. It's the Municipal Facilities Committee, which is trying to get a sale going on thirty-six eighty-five South Vermont. This is in Mr. Harris Dawson's district, if I've got that correct. But here, there's no conflict panel needed, sir. I assume you'll be overseeing that one for everybody. Thank you for that. As I said, I, I really wanted to talk about item number nineteen, because you know I was instrumental in bringing forward the Wells Fargo...
Mr. Previn, items three, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-eight, sixty, sixty-eight, and sixty-nine.
Fifty-two is a seven-hundred-and-twenty-five million dollar in general obligation refunding bonds. Now, the L.A. Times, Peter Jamison, wrote about how what we have going on here in our pension program at the City of Los Angeles is resulting in twenty percent of all of the revenue that comes into the city going out the door for pensions. Now, we have to honor those here in California, and everyone wants to do that. But it's these kinds of, of deals for shaving the bonds this way and that and pushing out the obligation further so that the residents who come behind you, sir, once you're already out in the, in your retirement and having a great time playing shuffleboard with Westall and chain smoking, or whatever it is you guys do, when you're ignoring the public in CD seven. And Mr. Felipe Fuentes, who left the city council to go work for Apex, a lobbyist in Sacramento, left the people of Pacoima and Mission Hills and Silmar without representation at this very body. And that, frankly, smells to high heaven. And you ought to look at citywatchla.com today, and you can see an article that I wrote with my brother Joshua about how the bullet train, which is heading in the direction of these folks who were given a false sense of reprieve, it's really beyond the pale. Mayor Garcetti?
All right, your time has expired. Give him his minute for general public comment.
Okay, my, my general public comment has to be about, first of all, I wanna take five seconds to say I'm so sorry about the council member's father. That is a terrible tragedy, and I know it's been ongoing. But as for these folks who have come down to talk about the reef and Mr. Price's district, it is astonishing that this body could not bring themselves to allow, to push these people away from their advocacy for their own neighborhood. I, I find it appalling, and I've looked at that project. And I find when the city council continues these games of pushing people out, like with the Venice Improvement District, Mr. Bonin, or whoever else tries, Mr. Krikorian's probably cooking up the Harvard-Westlake malfeasance that he's got in store for us later, it's just unthinkable that this body would continue to just push the public away as if we don't matter. It's the most important ministerial duty you all have together, and you don't honor it, and you don't honor it regularly, and I'm sick of it.
Okay, Mr. Walsh? John Walsh? Items two, forty-eight, fifty-two, fifty-six, fifty-seven, and sixty-one. John Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, tweeting at Hollywood Dems, and for the record, that was Nury Martinez's father. I think his name should be mentioned.
Let's, let's stay on the item.
Okay, you're not interested, you wanna, uh, number two. Number two is, uh...
Mr. Walsh?
CVS Pharmacy Drug Store, another liquor license. Ninety percent of people who are run over in hit-and-run are drunk, and you keep adding more and more liquor license. The blood of those people who are killed in hit-and-run on your hands. Number forty-eight. Number forty-eight, this is, uh, uh, street, uh, street lighting. Actually, you do a fairly good job in street lighting. When you do a good job, I give you a pat on the back. When you do a shitty job, I give you shit. Number forty-eight. And then fifty-two is, uh, fifty-two is, uh, three-quarters of a billion dollars to create a related special fund for homelessness. We are spending literally trillions of dollars on homelessness, and it all goes into the pocket of fat bureaucrats and your friends. The streets, three-quarters of a billion dollars. And you're not gonna hear anything from these people on that. Fifty-six, fifty-seven. Fifty-six, this is, uh, vacating a posi, a portion of an alley. You go to the, the developer goes to you, pays off in, in campaign contributions, then gets everything changed, the, the, all the zoning. And that's when you wake up, especially in black and Hispanic neighborhoods, and see a huge gentrification project next to you, 'cause you didn't pay off the politicians. Fifty-seven, and then fifty, fifty-seven, this is, uh, another homeless, uh, BS. And then sixty, sixty-one. City engineer installation of a Ryan Reynolds Hollywood Walk of Fame. The Hollywood Walk of Fame is a disgrace. You have let it fall apart. People over there who, it's not run by the city. It's allowed to be run by a nonprofit. It is garbage. It's falling apart. When someone took a crap on Donald Trump's star, no one noticed the crap. No one noticed it, because it just was part of the blended in the field. Okay, one minute...
Let's give him his one minute for his general public comment.
Okay, come to my website. You're gonna see something you will not see anywhere else. This is Hillary Clinton's reaction to losing. She went hysterical. She went berserk. The media didn't do the story. Look at the picture of her. Look at the picture of Hillary Clinton. And she, she went so berserk, she punched her husband in, in the jaw. And then she kicked him in the balls at the spot that Monica Lewinsky likes to suck on, uh, liked to suck on. I'm telling you right now, the city is, Hillary Clinton, tears of self-pity. You just go to HollywoodHighlands.org and you'll see the picture, tears of self-pity going down her face. She was, we had a choice of two pathological liars, and they picked the one with the vagina, picked the one without a vagina. That's all I can say about this election.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh, thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, we have, uh, we have twelve members, so why don't we lay out the items for reconsideration, and then we'll vote on them again. So what items?
The items with ordinances would be items eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen. And then again, items forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, and the last, forty-nine and fifty.
Okay, so the first vote is on reconsideration. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
And now let's actually vote on the items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote. Okay, Mr. Herman, why don't you come forward? Items one, two, three, forty-one, no, not forty-one, and sixty-six. One, two, three, and item sixty-six. Then you get his, uh, pub, general public comment. Mr. Herman, you wanna speak? Come on.
Si, señor. Yo soy el bullshit of City Hall. I come to speak regarding all the bullshit on the liens.
What item?
The goddamn liens. Item one, jackass. Don't you pay attention to your own agenda? After all, I'm just a puppet like the rest of you.
Stay on the item, Mr. Herman.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Chair, don't fall out. So, as you all may know and wanna know, that as of today in CD nine, we're opening up a CVS pharmacy called a drugstore. Really, drugstore. Incidentally, though, at ten-twenty-five East Adams Boulevard, hey, lady with the camera, cheese. Oh, give me back on the, on the topic. Oh, no. Now, yeah, out there on Adams, they wanna sell you alcohol for a convenience. Now, how many times have you heard of the Alcoholics Anonymous? That some of you have participated, Herb, like your son. We don't need more alcohol license. We need more triple-A clubs so that I cannot join you and your son. And now going into item number three, Herb, Herman, this is regarding CD eleven. Just what we need, more drugs and alcohol. After all, it's a convenience. Burros, estos burros. Pero no entienden los pendejos porque nomas quieren que beber y tomar más jugos de los tortugas en sus camiones de la lugar. Yo no me gusta tomar solamente monster drinks, because it brings the bullshit out of me. That's why I come to City Hall, to talk bullshit regarding the West Century Boulevard located at, at six-one-seven-one. Do we want alcohol in our community? No. Do we want Hillary Clinton as our president? No. So we obviously do not want alcohol, Mr. Herman. After all, Mr. Herman, Chair, you know, I heard a lot of stories about alcohol at City Hall. Isn't that incident regarding Francine Goode and Weezer a part of alcohol? After all, alcohol makes you sexy. Look at the videos on TV and all the commercials about alcohol and convenience.
Okay, give him his minute for general public comment.
So Herman, as you are called at City Hall, whatever the hell your name really is, you, the public, are unaware of the TMUs, Threat Management Unit. But those of you who have been investigated by detectives and thrown out of your homes, let's thank them for the HHH support. Let's thank them for the new measures of support on homelessness, because under all issues and concern, they're not addressing the problem. Threat Management Unit under Hugo Rossetor LLC, representing the City of Los Angeles, has become a threat to all of you. But now that we got a new president, and he doesn't like the Democrats, and he loves First Amendment, I am protected by First Amendment, Herb. You see, Herman? All the dumbass Democrats lose their jobs, have no jobs, and like the little bull said, you're all bullshit.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, Mr. Herman, just sit down and be quiet, don't disrupt the meeting. Let's move now quickly to item sixteen. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes, one no.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Englander?
Uh, two things. Please put me down as a note vote on that and ask ITA to check the screen. It's not, my screen's not functioning.
Okay, on item sixteen, let's change Mr. Englander's vote to a no. And IT, if you can make sure we're not having any technical glitches. Mr. Harris Dawson?
Can we, uh, have forthwith on eighty-five oh two?
Okay, let's do item thirty-two. Madam Clerk, it's my understanding on item thirty-two, the amendment has been circulated?
That is correct. The amending motion has been posted and circulated.
Okay, so on item thirty-two, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote. Okay, uh, Mr., uh, someone that identifies themselves as Puppet Man? Mr. Spindler, you have items, uh, one, forty-seven, fifty-one, fifty-three, and fifty-four, fifty-four J. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, kids. Thank you, everybody. So let's talk about first the bullshit, and then we'll get to the basic agenda. Everybody knows liens against homes lead to homelessness. Liens are the devil. Liens are terrible. But today, like all the times when the bull comes, Marquis Harris Dawson will wave the liens in CD eight. So come aboard, come up and be counted. Yes, today is Thanksgiving Day for liens. We forgive you for all your liens. Yes, all of your liens are forgiven today on this special day where Mr. Marquis gave out turkeys. Gobble, gobble, gobble. Yes, turkeys. Gobble, 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 and now we're going to forgive liens. What's next? LAPD is going to stop shooting people? Ha, 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 ha. No, I'm sorry, that was rhetorical.
Let's get on the topic, uh, Mr. Spindler.
That was rhetorical.
No, get on the topic, Mr. Spindler.
Yes, I know, the topic, the bullshit topic. So again, that's why we have liens. And now we go to CD five, and Paul Carret's in the name of Seder, in the name of the Messiah, he will forgive his liens as well. So come up here. And of course, Bob Blumenfeld in CD three will also forgive your liens. Shout out to Reseda, shout out to Winnetka. But David Rue...
Move on to another item. You know, a minute per item, Mr. Spindler.
Yes, but because we're operating under new procedures and because I'm a bull and haven't learned to read...
Mr. Spindler, get on another item. You know the rules.
Yes, I, yes, but I know the rules.
The item, the speaker's still not speaking to the agenda items.
Okay, let's go to his general public comment.
Can you give me some ideas?
Let's go, no, 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 wait.
Give me some ideas.
Now, this is your general public comment, Mr. Spindler, go ahead.
Let's talk about perjury. Let's talk about perjury in the Superior Court. What is your name, Mr. President? Herman J. Wesson, Jr. Have you used any other alias names? You didn't put that down. Were you really afraid on May the eleventh, or did you use it as a political tool? The latter. I have not received yet restitution and damages and a withdrawal of your phony fraudulent perjured restraining order. I have waited for six months. How long am I supposed to wait? So, when you go to a court of law, next time, don't forge your signatures on the documents. And Hugo Rossetor, please don't forge the complaint and then have a staff member sign it for you and claim you do that. If you do that, you can lose your bar license. Get your goddamn act together.
Okay, we're gonna take some general public comment for a while now. So when I call your name, please move to the microphone. Jacqueline Richardson, come forward. Mr. Herman, please stop applauding. You have people here that wanna speak. Okay, so if I can get Ms. Richardson, William Flores, Sean, and Cynthia Stroth, Strothman, Please identify yourself.
Jacqueline Richardson, why is Trump sending immigrants out of this country? Is it so that he can replace the workers with holographs who were made in a factory and not born from the womb? City Council has been accused of having a few holographs on its staff. They, holographs can also do very complex, difficult, uh, work. Some holographs today are having problems with elimination of their body and solid fluids. If they take the solid fluids out and lip, uh, the wrong way, then, uh, they can lose complex thousands of dollars of complex programs. But if they don't move them at all, that waste can turn into bugs, or they have bugs running around inside their system. I, I really don't know that much about holographs. I just know, uh, just a little bit. I'm sorry I don't know more about it.
Thank you. Please, next speaker, come and identify yourself.
Hello, my name is Cynthia Strothman. I'm here on behalf of Sage and the Unidad Coalition. I'm here to talk about the reef, the process for generating the community benefits associated with this, thanks, are hor, was horribly flawed. It lacked transparency and has led to benefit packages that are both inadequate and poorly thought out. Only one-point-nine percent of these housing units is going to be affordable housing because only the rental units are being counted as part of the affordable housing base. They're inadequate compared to what the public wants, who recently voted for prop, for measure JJJ, and what elected officials want in terms of the linkage fee. In addition, the need here is huge. This part of town has the highest homelessness rate in the city, and we need eighty thousand more units of affordable housing in the city in general. Forty-three thousand people are at risk of being displaced. We talk about this development being catalytic, and it will be catalytic. It will lead to massive displacement. At some point, somebody is going to try to make an argument that increasing the number of housing units will help. It will not. This is like producing Lamborghinis when what we need is used pickups.
Thank you. Come forward and identify yourself.
Sean Murphy, I signed up for twenty-two and thirty-five. Hillary Clinton didn't win the presidency. She didn't lo, she wasn't honest. We need to keep the sidewalks cleaned, our libraries open, and I voted for measure M and JJ and the home, and HH. And I'll see you at the Hollywood Christmas Parade. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. And if we can get John Trung, Benjamin Torres, Lucia Torres, Pat Diaz. Yes, sir, identify yourself.
William Flores. My neighborhood imperfect, and this I can admit, but it's also full of... My neighborhood imperfect, and this I can admit, but it's also full of people that survive and don't submit. These houses need some loving, and we ask, but they say slumming. I think they want us out, but their happy checks are coming. Every year it's getting worse because the rent keeps going up. Living here is like a curse, but we refuse to give this up. When I say this, I mean my hood, because my hood has been my home. No matter what the struggle, it has never let me go. From the mothers down the street to the youngsters playing ball, or the market on the corner with the sign that will not fall, the neighbors that took care of us, that seem to be on call, because when something needs fixing, you would think we'd do it all. So when people try to build a project in my hood, I might welcome it with open arms if it only understood that our voice has more than mattered when you're building where we live, and you'll need my hood's approval, because if not, we won't forgive. No on the reef.
Thank you, sir. Please come forward and identify yourself.
Good afternoon, my name is Benjamin Torres. I'm the president and CEO of CD Tech and a proud member of Unidad Coalition, here to talk about that we're against the reef project as it's currently constructed, because it's been used as a divisive tool in our community to manipulate and disempower folks who are the most vulnerable in South Central Los Angeles. It's been the poor fighting against the poor for the benefit of the wealthy and the rich, and, uh, we're tired of that kind of manipulation. The process for engaging residents has been very, very dishonest. We had a horrible town hall in May that produced nothing but divisiveness, because there was not an op, there was not an opportunity for people to talk about the concerns about the project. The four neighborhood councils in South Central Los Angeles have said that they're against the project, and yet the project goes through on consent calendar. We're very disappointed that a council that is so concerned about community engagement across the city is not willing to give us a fair hearing about this process in a way that truly reflects the interests and the needs of small businesses, the mom and pops out of LA, renters, and folks, black and brown, people who've been there for many, many years.
Thank you.
Putting up with the conditions.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please, please identify yourself.
Hi, I'm John Trung. I'm here with the Unidad Coalition and folks who are here to oppose the reef project. I just want to point out that the current development agreement, which I understand still needs to be up for approval by this body, is actually out of compliance with the proposed draft, uh, community plans for the southeast LA area. According to the proposed draft plan, this project that seeks to build above 1.5 FAR density would be required to build at least ninety-four extremely low-income units. Mr. Price and his folks who are working in his office have short-sold this community, and they have short-changed the community, and they are in no position to say that they represent the community. And my understanding is the folks and the constituents are here today to oppose this project, have attempted to express this, um, you know, but ultimately have been ignored by this office, and I think also have been ignoring the recommendations of their own, uh, Department of Public Planning. So I urge you to oppose this project. I urge you to not approve the draft, uh, to approve the development agreement, and I urge you to oppose the reef project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So if I could get the next, next speaker, please identify yourself.
Hello, my name is Lucia Torres. I'm here in opposition to the reef. I'm a youth development, uh, worker, as well as an economic development worker. The community in South Central LA for the past two years now have been coming together and creating a plan, a very viable plan for the South Central community that was community-based. These plans have been ignored by Councilmember Price, as well as the developers from the reef. They have come time and time again with these plans for affordable housing, for jobs, for youth development, for open spaces, for parks. And again, these plans have been ignored. Not once has a community said that they do not want development in their community. They want livable, equitable development, and that is not what the reef is. So we are here today, we're marrying people here in the community saying that they oppose the reef. I am one of these people, as well as the young people that I work with, the young, the small business owners that I work with as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So if I can get Jorge Nuno, uh, and Orinio Opnado, Pat Diaz, Stephen Love, Delilah Ayala, and your name?
My name is Omar Penya. I'm signed up for issue forty-one.
Well, within it, you have to, I have to take the people whose names I called first, so it, I don't, uh, I'll have somebody chat with you. Yes, sir, identify yourself.
Good afternoon, my name is Jorge Nuno. I am a resident and a small business owner here in CD nine, and I'm also a candidate for the district. I, uh, I'm here to oppose the reef as it stands. Uh, what's really disturbing here is that, considering that our city is a progressive city, but yet we have community members opposing this project for over years. What I don't understand is, how do we show that we're a progressive city where we are literally fast-tracking a project just so it not, is not impacted by an initiative that just passed by the, by the people of the city? So this really takes the trust in our elected officials, and I think we really need to do some soul-searching of, what does this mean? Are you really guys, are you showing that you're representing the community when you intentionally, our community knows that this project is being fast-tracked?
Thank you, sir. Thank you. So if I could have the next speaker come and identify yourself, please? Yes, sir.
I, Orinio Opnado, am upset with the lying I have heard about the reef, because I know by experience how many of the council is funded by billionaires to take advantage of the low income with promises of lies and drugs. My mom called and wrote letters about the CIA putting drugs in South Central to two blacks, Mayor Thomas Bradley and a councilperson. She and the children were ignored for the benefit of the billionaires of Nicaragua. I experienced what happened to the children in my community with lies to get rich and how they were murdered in their dreams. I see the plan of the liquid drugs everywhere in the reef to zero into the addiction of many adults in South Central and to promise to have all these children for, for parents taken care of for gratitude, but it is an investment to get even richer on children. I saw a video how the reef hired alcoholics to attack anyone opposed to the reef. Check it out on Sage, Facebook. I know how oligarchs think to get richer.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. So if I could have the next, and your name, sir?
My name, Stephen Love.
Okay, hold, hold tight one second, Stephen. So now I'm looking for Pat Diaz, Delilah Ayala, Joe Donlin, Ember, I think Knight. So please come down, sir. The floor is yours.
All right, I'm, uh, Stephen Love. I'm with, uh, Unidad. I'm here, I oppose the reef. Um, they claiming five percent rental. We are saying only one-nine percent is, is all housing, which includes condos, because they don't want to offer any low income. It's segregated housing. They say that you can work here, you could pay rent here, but you can't have a state here. I've been doing research, and a lot of these luxury houses is even starting off at three thousand already for singles and ten thousand for two, for two bedrooms. One point, one-nine percent is not enough. Karen is not the brother or the lady that look like us or live in these conditions, so he shouldn't be able to make a decision for us. You know, people are selling out for a dollar, but, um, like I said, one-nine percent ain't enough. We need more affordable housing in these communities, and that's it.
Thank you, sir. So if I could add the next speaker, and again, I'm looking for, uh, Joe Stringer, Maria Gomez, Alexander Harndon, uh, please, okay, identify yourself.
Hi, I'm Ember Knight. Good morning. Two weeks ago today, I addressed this council for the first time to announce my candidacy for King of LA. A few hours later, the emotional climate of this city altered dramatically. And so I have put great thought into what I would like to say today, and here it is. Through watching archived footage of these meetings, I've noticed that only certain speakers receive a close-up camera angle. I'd like to request of the good citizen operating the camera angle switchboard that you consider giving fair and unbiased coverage to all speakers, even the crazy ones like myself. Now more than ever, we must encourage productive and disciplined community involvement from all of our citizens. Thank you, and God bless the city of LA.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Identify yourself.
Good afternoon, Joe Donlin. With the Unidad Coalition, we stand in opposition to the reef project. Want to continue to point out the travesty of the development project and what is being proposed within it. The 1.9% of affordable housing is, um, falls way short of any standard. Earlier, we heard about the state density bonus. If you look at the southeast LA community plans, the draft CPIOs, um, as well as the mayor's, um, draft affordable housing linkage fee study and measure JJJ, by all of these standards, our leadership, with all of you standing behind Karen Price, has left so much on the table, has not defended the community from development that is going to impose significant displacement impacts. And multiple recent studies have come out to show that these displacement impacts are real, even when they're off-site, and so this is a disappointment.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker. Good to see you.
Good to see you. Good morning. My name is Joe Stringer, and I am a member of ACE, Alliance of California for Community Empowerment. And I came this morning to speak about the reef. But the first thing, I want to say this. ACE is an organization we do not believe in vow. But I want you to know, as of last week, ACE member was at the reef and was attacked because of what's happening now, then that's not ACE's problem. But I'm not going to talk about the reef, because I've heard so much about it from all these speakers and stuff, but I want to say this. This morning, Mr. Wilson, you asked the commendation to stand and pledge. I want to speak on three words that were said.
Miss, Mr. Stringer, your time has expired. If I give you more time, I have to give everybody. We give one, Mr. Stringer, we give one, we give one minute, we give one, we give one, we give one minute per person. Please, so if I could have the next speaker? Next, next, next speaker, please? Next speaker, come on, ma'am.
Alô? Buenas tardes a todos. Mi nombre es María Gómez. Soy miembro de ACE y tengo treinta y seis años viviendo en el distrito nueve. Alô?
Hello.
Buenas tardes.
Good afternoon.
Mi nombre es María Gómez.
My name is María Gómez.
Soy miembro de ACE.
I am a member of ACE.
Tengo treinta y seis años de vivir en el distrito nueve.
I lived for thirty-six years in District Nine.
Y es injusto que cuarenta y tres mil familias vayan a ser desplazadas en mi comunidad.
And it's really unfair that forty-three thousand families are going to be displaced in my community.
Y solamente por construir viviendas de lujo.
And just because you want to, uh, build, uh, luxury housing.
Y no me parece justo.
I don't think it's fair.
¿Por qué? Porque al final del día ellos van a, 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 este, a, atraer viviendas de lujo solamente y no queremos viviendas de lujo, queremos que construyan también vivienda económica en nuestra comunidad.
Yes, because only at the end of the day, they're going to bring only housing, luxury housing, and what we really want is that they build affordable housing in our community.
Y lo que hacen que construyen compañías privadas y al final del día les dan trabajos a la comunidad que no es de aquí, a gente que no vive aquí.
And what they do is that they build, what they do is they build, uh, companies for people that don't live there, and that's something that we don't like, because they provide with jobs to people who do not live in our community.
Y por eso no estoy de acuerdo.
That's why I do not agree with that project. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So if I could have the next speaker? The next speaker, please come forward and identify yourself. Yes, sir.
Good morning, my name's Alexander Harndon. I'm with the Legal Aid Foundation of Los Angeles. I'm here to echo the comments about the reef project in opposition. The public process for this project has been severely flawed. The secret process didn't take the project's true accounts into effect, effects into account. Community concerns have been disrespected and disregarded, and a study demonstrating the project's displacement potential was ignored. As a result, you've approved a project that is completely out of touch with the surrounding community and a community benefits package that is woefully inadequate. I urge you to truly represent your constituents and ensure that development lifts our communities up instead of being built on their backs. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So if I could get Yvonne Michelle Autry, Yvonne Michelle Autry, uh, calling for Pat Diaz again, and Delilah Ayala. Yvonne Michelle Autry, please come forward. Yes, ma'am.
Well, you know, I'm, I'm reminded of the, of the farm that Jan Perry closed under the auspices of redevelopment, and that land still has not been redeveloped. And there were families that were contributing and, and building in the community. Young men were not participating in gang-related activity, and you all shut that down. That was evil, evil. I don't know how much they paid you, but it's evil. This is even worse. These are people, these are families, these are senior citizens. You know, Thanksgiving, they came and took the land. Now this Thanksgiving, what, you're going to revisit that and take away their homes? Creating more, more homeless people? This is ridiculous. Let the people stay there. They need a place to live. And this is, this is not only a lie, and what recreation, a re-establishment of housing for these people that you're willingly displacing at this time? You know, God is watching you. God is watching you. Every day is Thanksgiving, not just when you or anybody tells me to give thanks. These people have homes. You have to live with yourself.
Thank you, Ms. Autry. Thank you. So I want to, I want to call for Pat Diaz and Delilah Ayala. Okay, that's the last call. Uh, with that, that's, uh, the end of general public comment, and Madam Clerk will close general public comment. Let's move on to the next item. Okay, Mr. O'Farrell, item forty-one. And to the gentleman that was here earlier to speak on forty-one, the public, no, no, young, sir, the, uh, public comment has been satisfied on that item. Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. So item forty-one is a report regarding affordable housing policy options and the feasibility of implementing a value capture policy. Colleagues, I introduced, uh, the motion before us today on a value capture policy in September of 2014, uh, over two years ago. Uh, since then, Los Angeles has become even more unaffordable than it was then. It is the most unaffordable city in the nation, with sixty-two percent of tenants paying more than thirty percent of their household income for rent, and thirty-three percent of tenants severely rent-burdened, which means they're paying a higher proportion of their income to rent than is, uh, ideally available to live on for basic necessities. More than fifty percent of their income. It's essential, I'm sorry, it is estimated that there are twenty-six thousand homeless individuals in the city of Los Angeles. Rent-burdened people close to becoming homeless and barely getting by to pay their rent are the group of people that are most vulnerable to becoming homeless. I've always thought that establishing an incentive-based value capture policy was an important part of addressing LA's homeless and housing crises, which we have all become too familiar with. Here is what we are approving today, colleagues. The options, the following options. The fixed requirement, this structure would trigger a flat-rate affordable housing percentage set aside on eligible projects receiving a general plan amendment or zone change. Option two, similar to the above, the amount of the affordable housing requirement would be fixed, but this option would require more specific multiple income ranges to promote housing for underserved groups such as those with moderate or extremely low income. And third, affordable housing requirements would vary according to the amount of additional density or residential floor area being requested through zoning entitlement, as with the density bonus program, otherwise known as SB eighteen eighteen. The set-aside percentage would increase in relation to the requested level of residential density. Colleagues, what prompted me to move forward with this over two years ago now was what has been happening across our entire city. We have this unprecedented growth going on, billions of dollars of development across the entire city, but no
one of the most efficient and effective tools that we will have at our disposal. We heard the item in plumb, and we directed planning to begin drafting an ordinance right away. The ordinance we asked for will be based on a fixed structure requiring a flat-rate set aside for all projects requiring a general plan amendment or zone change. And as we saw, the number of general plan amendments that have been requested, I do believe we've missed many. And fortunately, if we could just ask for an expeditions review of this, get it back quickly to our committee and back on the council floor as soon as possible, we will be able to capture many of these projects that are going through. But thank you, Mr. O'Farrell, for your tenacity. This must have, should have been done a while back, and here we are talking about this crisis. And now hopefully with this, we will be able to move forward and create more affordable housing in the city. Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell.
Okay, thank you. Let's, on this item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, Mr. Keretz, you want to move to item 17?
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, we're taking important steps today towards responsible banking. We all know what has come to light with Wells Fargo, the trying to meet owner-of-sales goals. Employees created over 2 million unauthorized savings accounts, checking accounts, and other accounts, credit cards, and this prompted a wide-ranging investigation that we all know about. And the city attorney also took action against Wells Fargo because it became obvious the city needed to act. Item 17 before you is the Budget and Finance Committee report on my motion that I co-presented with Mr. Krikorian, asking, among other things, that the responsible banking ordinance be amended to add as one of its core purposes, the promotion of responsible consumer banking within the city of Los Angeles. The Office of Finance will soon be putting out an RFP for banking services, and I'm adding an additional recommendation to the report that will require banks who bid on this RFP to sign an affidavit that they are not engaged in consumer-averse practices such as predatory sales goals imposed on banking employees, and that a failure to comply will result in their disqualification. I ask for your "aye" vote to approve the Budget and Finance report as amended.
Thank you, Mr. Keretz. The change, the amendment is substantive, so I'm going to call some, we have several people that signed up to speak on that, and I want to, I'm looking for Erica Torres, Erica Torres, Ruth Landaverte, someone that just signed it, Irma, Javier, Vera Alatorre, Cheryl Bacon, is it Ilah Bowen, Maria Loyah. Yes, please just identify yourself and then go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is, yes, good afternoon. My name is Ruth Landaverte. I'm a former bank worker. I have worked in the financial industry, industry for more than five years at Bank of America in Wells Fargo, and has witnessed the targeting of the most vulnerable in our community by bank managers as a strategy to sell more products without fully informing their customers about, about those financial products. Working at two separate branches of Bank of America here in California, I noticed that there are two, there was a difference in sales goals and how we explain products. I worked in Toluca Lake, and the clientele there is much more educated, and I was told by management to not be very aggressive in selling products such as credit cards, and because if we weren't very clear on what we were selling, they would sue us. Now, I was changed to a different branch in Van Nuys in the San Fernando Valley, and we don't get, you know, too many educated people there.
Thank you. So if I could have the next person, please come and identify themselves.
Good afternoon. My name is Javier Sarmiento. I'm from San Fernando Valley, and I'm here representing thousands of hard-working immigrants that are being taken advantage of the banks. I have been a victim of sales goals. I got a credit card in the mail that I didn't request it, but they told me, "Don't worry. You are a good customer." I ended up using the card, and I missed one credit card payment. They charged me $35 late fee. The debt from the credit card affected my whole family. I didn't see the big picture, how the banks work to push these products on the community that we don't need. We don't need to keep us indebted to them for the years to come. When the banks cause our economy to collapse, we bail them out. They are again, and we need you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please identify yourself.
Hello, my name is Vera Alatorre. I'm a CWA president of Communications Workers of America, Local 9505. I'm here to support bank workers and consumers in demanding accountability in the banks. For too long, banks have been allowed to fleece our communities. The Wells Fargo scandal exposed how sales goals create a hostile work environment for employees that leads into pushing unnecessary debt. That's why I am here to urge you to support the Keretz motion to incorporate consumers' whistleblower protection. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could get the next speaker to please come forward and identify yourself.
Good afternoon. My name is Cheryl Bacon. I'm the secretary of NABIT CWA, Local 95053. We represent about 1,700 members throughout Los Angeles. We're proud to stand here with the bank workers to make history today. We ask that you take responsibility and hold all banks accountable for the abuse that is taking place as a result of sales goals. Los Angeles should lead the way on this, and I urge you to vote to support the Keretz motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please identify yourself.
Hello, my name is Ilah Bowen, and I'm standing here on behalf of CWA and of bank workers and consumers. We are asking you as city officials that have been elected to, to represent your L.A. consumers and the constituents, to just do the right thing. We're not asking for a miracle, a miracle or the impossible. We're just asking you to, to hold these banks accountable for their unethical business practices that have been going on for far too long. We've already turned a blind eye one too many times. We're blind in both eyes now to the point where we have to turn to you, the city council, to just do the right thing and put some policies in place so that these unethical business practices will come to a stop. It is not okay on any level. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Identify yourself.
Hello, my name is Judy Rapue, and I'm with Communication Workers of America, District Nine. We represent approximately 65,000 workers in the states of California, Nevada, and Hawaii. We've been working with the Committee for Better Banks for the past three years to organize bank workers. We represent hundreds of thousands of customer service workers in the country, and we know workers want to serve their customers with respect and dignity. We have met bank workers here in Los Angeles and across the country, workers from all different banks, and every one of them talks about the pressures to meet sales goals in their banks and the ethical dilemmas that they have to face in order to do so. If they do not push enough credit cards, loans, accounts every day, they face disciplinary harassment and even termination from the banks. I urge you to vote to support Keretz's motion, will put in place consumer protections and the tools to screen the banks that want to do business here in the city of L.A. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, please. Yes, ma'am.
Good morning. My name's Mona Bly. I was a CSSR, which is a customer service and sales representative at the Wells Fargo branch located in Palms, Samar Vista area. I'm here to speak out against the stress, against the illegal practices. I was told by bankers, by managers, to target people with children, the elderly, because they had grandchildren, to open savings accounts with no authorization. I was given paper applications and told to tell customers to sign them with no filled-out information so that I could open an account, transfer funds illegally into that account, and then work backwards to try to get authorization after the account was opened. This caused severe stress for me. I endured six weeks of psychiatric meetings because I went on stress leave after a manager pressured me. You have to make a change. Stop letting these banks take advantage of your people.
Thank you. So again, I'm looking for Erica Torres, Irma, Maria Loyah, Patrick Smith, Beverly Roberts. Mr. Smith, Mr. Spindler, sit down. Do you guys want a, I mean, this is a serious issue. Would you please sit down? Would you please sit down? Is he part of your group? Is he part of your group? You're down here on a very important issue. Mr. Spindler, sit down. You're not, you're disrupting this meeting. Respect these people. No, respect these people, sergeants. He's disrupting the meeting. I think he should leave. Okay, now he can, let's, let's see if he behaves. Okay, we're going to start all over, and I want to just say, thank all of you for taking the time out of your busy schedules to come down, and we recognize that this is a very important issue, and it should be taken seriously, and we will take this seriously. So with that said, identify yourself again and go on.
Thank you. My name is Maria Loyah, and I'm with Committee for Better Banks. And, Councilmember, this is a very serious issue because it has impacted thousands and thousands of people, both bank workers as well as consumers. And we are here to ask that you hold banks accountable. We were informed that under the Contractor Responsibility Ordinance, banks are exempt, not because of preemption issue, simply because banks don't want to be held accountable. And we're here to ask that you take measures and support Keretz's motion to incorporate consumer protections and whistleblower protections in place. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So the next speaker, please come and identify yourself.
They're not here.
Are we, so, so, Ms. Torres, Irma, Mr. Smith, and Ms. Roberts?
Oh, Ms. Roberts, yes.
I saw you get up. I thought you were going to come down here and speak.
Yes, I am, and I hope I have enough time to say what I want to say.
Well, you got a minute like everybody else.
I know that, okay. My name is Beverly Roberts, and I've been in South L.A. for 48 years. Also, as a senior, it is very upsetting to me that the banks target the most vulnerable in our communities with unnecessary debt. I recently found out that the banks are exempt from your Contractor Responsibility Ordinance. Why? Because the banks don't want to be held accountable so they were given a pass while they continue to use predatory practices against consumers. I urge you to vote yes on the Court's motion to amend the Responsible Banking Ordinance to include consumer protection, let's see, you got me scared, tied to the banking service RFP that protect us from sales goals. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Keretz and members, why don't we prepare to vote on this item? Oh, Mr. Smith, okay, yeah, please come forward.
Hello, my name is Patrick Smith. I'm an ACE member. Also, I'm a victim of sales goals with Bank of America. I am here to support, I'm here in support of the bank banking with integrity ordinance against sales goals, and I am urging you to please support the motion because banks should not force their employees to stiff the consumers for corporate profits or else get fired. This motion will hold banks accountable, and I'm here in support of Paul Keretz's motion and hope it is approved in the future. Thank you.
Okay, so I don't have a Irma or a Ms. Torres?
No.
Okay, all right then. So let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Okay. Okay, Mr. Keretz, before I call you on your special item, I want to go through some of these items quickly. So Madam Clerk, let us prepare to vote on items 1, 2, 3, 48, 51, and 52. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, now we'll vote on items 53, 56, 58, 60, 61, 68, and 69. In fact, let's eliminate 53 from that. We'll vote on the remaining items. So let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
And, Mr. President, for the record, the ordinances for items 48, 51, and 52 will be held over to November 29th.
Okay, Mr. Keretz.
This is on Special Item 1, correct?
I can't hear you. Is your special?
Yes. This is regarding a property.
Wait a minute, Mr. Go ahead.
This is regarding a property located at 11,100 Shalon Road. It just came to the city's attention that today is the last day to act to review this property for cultural monument status. It's an architectural treasure, once one of master architect Wallace Neff's last homes. It has not been modified, so it is a pristine property, and we would like to have this considered for cultural monument status. So I ask for your "aye" vote.
Okay, let's vote on the findings. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Now this vote on the item.
I'm an Aces member. Also, I'm a victim of sales goals with Bank of America. I am here to support, I'm here in support of the bank banking with integrity ordinance against sales goals, and I am urging you to please support the motion because banks should not force their employees to stiff the consumers for corporate profits or else get fired. This motion will hold banks accountable, and I'm here in support of Paul Keretz's motion and hope it is approved in the future. Thank you.
Okay, so I don't have Irma or Ms. Torres?
No.
Okay, all right then. So let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Okay, Mr. Keretz, before I call you on your special item, I want to go through some of these items quickly. So Madam Clerk, let us prepare to vote on Items 1, 2, 3, 48, 51, and 52. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, now we'll vote on Items 53, 56, 58, 60, 61, 68, and 69. In fact, let's eliminate 53 from that. We'll vote on the remaining items. So let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
And, Mr. President, for the record, the ordinances for Items 48, 51, and 52 will be held over to November 29th.
Okay, Mr. Keretz.
This is on Special Item 1, correct?
I can't hear you. Is your special?
This is regarding a property-
Wait a minute, Mr., go ahead.
This is regarding a property located at 11,100 Shalon Road. It just came to the city's attention that today is the last day to act to review this property for cultural monument status. It's an architectural treasure, once one of Master Architect Wallace Neff's last homes. It has not been modified, so it is a pristine property, and we would like to have this considered for cultural monument status, so I ask for your I vote.
Okay, let's vote on the findings. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Now, let's vote on the item. All right, let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
And, Mr. President, there's a request to send the special forthwith.
Without objection.
There are also requests to send Items 12 and 69 forthwith.
Okay, we're going to take up Item 57, so do I have misdesire here to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Hi. Okay. The consideration for Lasha's application for FORTY, we'd like to know what exactly is Lasha doing right now for funding traditional age youth? This is in cooperation with the increase of homeless, that's in Skid Row. We currently would like for you to come out to Lemur Park, November 27th, where we will be giving a talent show for those in foster care because opportunities are not there for them. 12 noon to 5:00, we would like for city councilmen to come and support programming for our youth. So we know that $35 million that is allocated to Lasha, already they're not doing a great job in housing people quick enough because there's lack of housing for the amount of vouchers. So with that being said, I'm using my 10 seconds for you to please come out as an invitation to Lemur Park, Sunday, November 27th, and show the youth support who have been through this system that you guys are running horribly.
Thank you. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Mr. Harris Dawson, forthwith. Okay, let's go, Item 53. Is there any other business that we have? Is this the, Mr., in fact, so we'll hold that. Mr. Bloomingfield, we'll hold 53.
Yeah, we had asked for Item 40 for reconsideration with an amendment.
Okay, let's vote on reconsideration for Item 40. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Yes, Mr. City Attorney?
Just for the record, the amendment was posted and circulated and is not substantive.
Okay, so now we will vote on the item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That moves us now to Item 53. Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I just wanted to rise and thank our Planning Department and everyone who worked so hard on this item. We introduced a motion back in February of 2014 to initiate an HPOZ in the Berkshire area of El Surino. This area has some of the most beautiful crossman bungalows that define Southern California's spirit. After working with the community and with the Planning Department, this is before us today, and the actual area is not that large, only about six blocks, yet it is very rare to find so many homes clustered together the way they have survived in this pocket of El Surino. And I want to thank the planning staff for working on this so diligently with my office and the community. We were able to dovetail this effort with Survey L.A. Phase 3, which saved us time and taxpayer money, and so that efficiency is highly, we really appreciate that. It has been a long time coming, and with my colleague's vote today, this HPOZ will become effective on December 23rd, just in time for Christmas. So happy birthday, El Surino, for those of you who said you would be watching this and appreciate all your hard work to get us to this point. And last but not least, it's great to see that we're preserving more of Los Angeles history. Thank you. I ask for an A vote on this.
Thank you. Let us prepare to vote on this, members. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Mr. President, can I also request 68 to go forthwith, please?
Item 68, forthwith, Mr. Bloomingfield. 29 and 40.
39 and 40.
39 and 40. Okay, Madam Clerk, that brings us where?
Thank you for your work.
Oh, let's, okay, so on 53, let's open the roll. I thought we already, so we did. Okay, you confused me. So that brings us where?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted, and they are referred. Announcements, announcements, members. If I can ask, since there are no announcements, if I could ask everyone in the council chambers to please rise, please rise for adjourning motions. I'm looking to my right side, Mr. Weezer's side. Do I see any adjourning motions to my right? Now I'm looking to my left side, Mr. Harris Dawson's side. Then I want to, and I'm not going to be able to say much on this, I want to adjourn in the memory of Theo Theodore Ketchum. The best friend I ever had in my life. We went to college, can I have quiet in the back, please? Shh. I met him on my, the first hour that I was, when I went to college. Within 24 hours, we were best friends. He's been my best friend since I was 17 years old, and he passed away, and I will miss him. He was, most of the adventures that I had in my early life, and most of my misadventures that I had in my early life, I had with him. Most of the crazy things that I have ever done, I did with him. I climbed up one of those water towers, and I froze and couldn't get down, and they were going to call the fire department to come get me down. I would have been embarrassed for life. So what he did, he went and brought two girls, and I forced me to climb down because I was not going to let them see me, you know, get on a hook and ladder, and some fireman put me on his back and take me down. I went to school, and it was nothing but farm land, and we would, we would play cattle rustler, where we would go out and we would sneak into the farms, and we would jump in the pen with the cows, and we would run around, we chased them, just, I mean, just dumb stuff. And I never forget, we were doing it one, and usually it happened after some cheap wine, but still, you know, we would go, and I remember this door opens up, and this farmer or rancher comes out, and he chases us through the woods, and my buddy had on sandals. The next morning, he woke up with poison oak. I mean, you name it, we, we did, I mean, we would wear the same clothes, we pledged the same fraternity. Anyway, I want to adjourn, he was a hell of a man, so I want to adjourn in the memory of Theo Ketchum. It's no more business before this council, this council's adjourned.